Welcome everyone to the regular meeting Moose Lake City Council for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. The first item on agendas and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our guests here tonight. Thanks for coming. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections, additions, changes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? One second. All in favor say aye. Aye, propose. Motion carried. Moving on, number two, the consent agenda, 2A, the minutes. First fund, regular city council meeting for August 14th, 2024. Number two, the special city council meeting, August 22nd, 2024. Number three, special city council meeting, September 5th, 2024. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Motion got approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Motion carried. Under 2B, financial reports. Number one, city accounts payable for August 2024. Number two, the city financial statements, August 2024. Number three, the liquor store profit-loss statement for August 2024. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion? So moved. Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, propose. Motion carried. Number three, public comment. This time as we reserve for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Mike, you're welcome to speak.
Mayor and the council, just want to kind of address up on Sioux Hill. Been fighting a war up there for probably as long as I've been up there, 38 years. And most of it is just building upkeep-up in the area. I did purchase one of the buildings to tear it down, which greatly improved my view to the north. But we do have a property owned by Gordy Sather, property owned by Chris Peterson, also the Blacklock Danielson Building. All of them have one thing in common, they're rental units. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done with the rental, if there's rental licenses. Anything can be withheld until these buildings get up to satisfactory level. But they just happened to kind of upgrade my building a little bit. On the outside, I put a window. When people walk in my lobby, this is exactly what they see through my lobby. And so now it's kind of become a more, a little bit of a personal issue. And I do know the back history of how the building got started, the grants, and how that building was not in that area. But just wondering, obviously, if at some point the council can address, I'm probably most interested in that building, if they can just address what can be done and/or, I don't even know if it's safe inside as well. So if there's something, anything the council can do, certainly would appreciate it. And just kudos to one landowner up there where the old Moose building was. I did contact the Thompsons, that they purchased that lot up there. The next day they went and bought it. And kudos to them, appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We do have some information that the administrator can share with you because we have been talking about these, the two, the one, the pitcher, and also the Thompson lot.
Yes, so in the council's packet, we actually have it as an agenda item for later on in the meeting. So the council has been made aware of different inspection reports related to some of the properties. So our city building official is involved. So they have visibility to some of those inspection reports and a letter from our city building official as far as, you know, recommendations for moving forward. He's drafted one for council to review. So if council so chooses tonight and there's consensus, we'll send out a letter contacting the property owner, one property owner in that area in particular, with items that are related to building code. And at this point in time, that is the authority or the approach that the city has in this case.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
Your building looks heavy.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, move on to number four. Departmental reports for a Carlton County Sheriff's Office activity report for August 2024.
Good afternoon, Mayor Shaw and council members and Administrator Owens. So you should have in your packet, information, sorry, statistical information that we sent, which included our August 2024 activity, totally 93 calls for service by the contract deputy assigned to Moose Lake and 101 calls for service by other county deputies during that time period. We had 18 extra patrol, 23 traffic stops, 26 business checks, three community engagements, and seven on-view or public assists made by the contract deputy, and 17 paper services, 18 traffic stops, 13 Stone Garden checks. So what that is, is we, the sheriff's office has a federal grant for extra patrol and checks related to critical infrastructure and traffic and narcotics enforcement throughout Carlton County. So those 13 Stone Garden checks were actually made by the deputy working those, but within the city of Moose Lake. And then the calls, the 911 calls to respond, there were 16 calls for service by the contract deputy and 51 calls for service by the other county deputies in that time period. And then there's more detail behind that that you have in your packets, but if you have any questions.
That's an increase from last month. And that tells you that the officers aren't doing their job. It's greatly appreciated. Please pass that. Thank you, everyone.
I will do that. I will do that.
The only question I have is, what was a Stone Garden patrol?
Yep, I did. I, in fact, I actually, initially Lieutenant Rada did this report and he didn't have that explained. I said, you might want to explain that because I guarantee you will get that question. So it stood name of the grant that the fed, federal government has named that particular grant program. So we did not come up with that name on our own. I don't know where they came up with that, but that's what it is. We've been actually participating in that grant program for several years now.
Just a quick question. Did someone else have one? Okay, I thought I said I had vision. Any update on other officers?
Yes, so we had one that just started within the last two weeks that is in field training. I just extended conditional job offers to three, two days ago. So they will start, you know, will do the pre-employment checks on them, background, physical, psychological evaluation, all that is required by the post-board rules. And so when we complete that, we will have, hopefully all three of them will make that and we'll get them started as soon as we can. There are a couple of lateral officers within that pool of candidates as well. So the training period likely will not take as long.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else?
No.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you. We appreciate it. And like I said, we, although we just have the one contract deputy now, as you can see, the other deputies are very busy within the city as well and still doing extra patrol and enforcement throughout the city. We wish you good luck. Thank you. Absolutely.
Moving on to 4B, city superintendent, Phil Outthere, department report for August 2024. Just a quick question. Kelly, we'd love for you to stay or leave anytime you want. It's appreciated.
Thank you. I do have a few other things to do, so.
You bet.
We will exit here. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Shaw, Administrator Owens. We've had a crazy, busy month of December, but we're getting it done and we're building our way through. So starting the water department like we always do, distributed 4.7 million gallons of drinking water this month of August. We do have five curb stops we need to repair here before the winter months. That'll be happening here in the next couple of weeks along with hydrant flushing on the week of the 23rd, the lead gas week of the 23rd. That'll be just as normal as we always do it. So maybe a little deceleration of water, possibly a little lack of water pressures in areas, but there will be a hose in the paper, social media, all the whole thing, right? Perfect. Service department, collection system collected 13 million gallons of wastewater this month of August. We are currently in the middle of our September discharge at the wastewater facility site. The 2024 Viking project is complete. We're currently finishing up some inspection paperwork and some videos left with that. I just got off the phone with our compliance officer. We are going to be getting a Level 1 inspection on our wastewater facility, which is normal. It's been about six years. I was told since our last year is done. So next week I will be crabby, so I will not be, I will be crabby. But it'll be okay. But, so that was, that was news.
July 11th in Crete.
More crabby tomorrow. Right, absolutely. Street, the right ways. Blacktop patching has been everywhere, Industrial Road, Cedar Avenue, 7th Street, 1st Street, Kenwood Avenue, Woodland Drive, and, oh, another one I forgot to put on here. Anyway, there was 49 ton of mix just on Industrial Road that went out last month, yet alone the rest of all these streets. So there's a lot of product going out and it's turning out nice. I mean, it's not perfect, but it's as good as we can do with what we got. And we're borrowing equipment that's not ours to the best of our ability. So we're getting it done. Cemeteries, they've been, they've been quiet again. Maintenance out there will be wrapping up here next week, just a reminder to everyone that all flowers and any type of special monuments need to be removed by Monday, otherwise they will be removed. And then those cemeteries need to go to bed for the winters. All the winterizing activities will happen after that as well. The campground, I don't have anything to report on the campground currently right now. Parks, no. The meet arena, we'll talk about later. Storm sewer, nothing. Gardening, we're gonna talk about that later, aren't we, Renee? Safety stuff, we're good there. Extras, that's all I have right now. Need a question? Yes?
I noticed on 1st Street at my home, there's like blue paint on my water thing and then some markers going off the street. What's going on there?
So there's a, I believe that is the electric utility putting in some new underground down 1st Street. That's part of the locate process. Is that correct? There is. Okay. That's part of the locate process. And once in a while when there's bigger projects like that, is for us to do a locate of two blocks takes two people, more than two days to do it. So if we get the heads up that, hey, there's going to be a locate coming in a week or a few, we can get some time, we start doing some of that. You will see a lot more paint.
I did see Scott out there doing it, but I didn't get a chance to ask what was going on.
Sure. That's just part of the locate process. So before any, any dirty work is done, all the utilities are located prior to the execution. Yep. Anything else?
Thank you very much, Phil. Appreciate it. Municipal liquor store, primary report, August 2024.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Shaw, Administrator Owens. Liquor store is doing great still. Our is doing a pretty good job down there. We're being a little more strategic with our staffing, so we're trying to patch things up where we need to be. We've been talking a lot about promotions, staffing, capital. We're also looking into this bottoms-up drink pour. For those who don't know what that is, it's pretty cool looking. You set the glass down and it pours upwards, so you eliminate all the waste from when you pour a drink and you have to sift it off the top. So in theory, you save, save some money there. We've reached out to Finlessen, they have it. Just waiting to hear back from them. When I reach out to the MMBA, they're going to get back to me on what their thoughts are on it because they have a pretty broad network that they can check and see who has it and what they think of it. So we're going from there. Yeah, other capital stuff we're looking at, potentially some tents because the tent prices for when we have our events outside the muni keep going up every year. I don't know why, the city maybe just looks into having their own tents. Maybe that's something we can rent out in the future as well when we're not hosting events. So throwing that out there. Yeah, any questions about the liquor store? We're going to make sure, hold on, before I lose my thought, we're going to make sure we don't lose out on any of the Vikings games. So there's a couple of games that, if anyone knows about the NFL schedule now, sometimes it's on Peacock, sometimes it's on Paramount, it's on these different things. So in order to get them all, you need a fire stick or you need something for your TV to make sure you don't miss out on the game. So we're making sure, yeah.
How are we doing with, like covering shifts with the one worker that is gone? And do we know how long they're going to be gone for?
You know what? I don't want to speak to that. I think there are some things that need to come back before we know exactly how long. I would say the estimate at least a couple of months here at minimum.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further questions? Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. We have library next.
Yeah, so, well, IT and library. So library for Laura, she's doing her due diligence. She is purchasing a 3D printer, which we hope will be just another unique selling point for people to stop into the Moose Lake Public Library. She picked out a really good one. She probably went through the Arrowhead Library System and they gave a recommendation based on other libraries. So I was good with it. It came in cheaper than other printers that I saw for the same model. I don't think she needs approval for it, so this is just morally informational that we're going to have it in there. It's in the budget, so all is good there. Any questions on the 3D printer? Yeah?
So that's something that the public can come in and use it and purchase?
Yep. Yeah. I think they're pretty neat.
Is there a warranty on this? Is there a warranty or anything like that? Because I saw it was on Amazon, you had something on Amazon.
Yeah, the Amazon one. The one she has picked out, I want to say it's like three-year for certain things on it.
So the Amazon was the second quote for us. So she, through the Arrowhead Library Systems, had got the Altamaker Maker Bot, the first quote, that was less. Again, she did get special pricing. So we checked it with what was available on the internet as well.
Perfect. Thank you. IT-related stuff. As you know, Administrator Owens sent out an email. We've been really struggling with our accounting system. The gist of it is, well, it could be twofold. There could be some things that we could do better job of and then also there were some other Windows and stuff updates that needed to be performed when we switched over the server. So the buffer just really got full of data, so we needed to do some things. Should be all cleared up. It's actually the fastest I've ever had it now, for my workstation anyway. I don't know about everyone else, but mine's working the best it ever has.
And yours are slower.
Which is most important, I think. Other IT stuff, just busy. I mean, I put in the new TV up there. That one was kind of done for. So there's another one for the hallway down the hall down there. I think Rory has some ideas on what he's going to do with that. So just kind of everywhere with that sometimes, IT stuff.
Any questions?
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Moving on to the 24E, city engineer.
Yes, the engineer meeting minutes from September 20th meeting are included in the packet. We're actually going to touch on the majority of these items throughout the agenda within the rest of the meeting, so I don't have anything specific to mention. Otherwise, upon review, Councilman Judd found some, some verbiage that was missing from some of the notes. So in letter C, section three, subnote C, some additional verbiage has been added in since I sent out the packet regarding the design of the trail will include signage to identify and delineate between the ATV trail and the new pedestrian trail. And I will go into more specifics on that within the trail on date. Any questions, please feel free to ask. Otherwise, we're going to cover these within other agenda items.
Anything from the council? Very good, thanks. Moving on to 4F, Chamber of Commerce updates.
Yes, we were able to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting today. We did attend as a group, just nice, we don't always get to attend. They have a lot going on. Thursday, September 12th at noon, there is a tour of the Carlton County Justice Center. Friday, September 13th at 9:30 AM, there's a ribbon cutting at Little Willow Childcare. Thursday, September 19th at 4:00 PM, there's a tour of the new Aspire St. Luke's Plaza. It's an open house from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And then there's also an after hours at the Moose Lake Golf Course, October 3rd, 5:00 PM. And then finally, truck retrieve, October 31st in the city park. So lots of upcoming events here within the next couple of weeks. If anybody's ever curious about specific events, the Chamber website does have a calendar of activities where all of these will be listed. In addition, they're in the middle of their annual raffle. And so there's a couple of spots around the community that can be, that are selling raffle tickets and so you can purchase them there. A few of them are Edward Jones, Valley Printing, 1st National Bank, and the Chamber office. So if anyone's interested in annual, in the taking part in the annual raffle, tickets can be purchased at those locations. And then lastly, there is a fall festival happening at Denim Run on October 19th.
Is there, is there something going on this weekend, Battle of the Bands?
The arena?
I think that's the 28.
28?
Yeah.
That's in October? Or September?
But that's not a Chamber.
Not a Chamber. Oh, okay, yeah. One thing that the Chamber talked about, they're doing, they want to try differently this year, is instead of having a big push on Small Business Saturday, they're going to do a Small Business Season opportunity. And so local businesses can be included on a bingo ticket. And then each business, you know, might have some type of participation level where you can go in and, you know, maybe it's, you buy a drink or you, you know, give your email address or whatever it might be, depending upon the type of business it is. You get a stamp and then there'll be prizes for people who get bingos on their card. So really trying to get people active in the community, engaging in small business, you know, patronizing small businesses and then, you know, make it kind of fun. And extending that to November 1st all the way through December 31st. So not just a one-time thing, but really trying to engage for, you know, a period of time over a couple of months here to boost local business activity.
Moving on to number five, previously discussed business, 5A, Elm Avenue, beautification discussion.
Good evening, city councillors, Mayor Shaw and Administrator Owens. Thank you guys for adding me up again. The last time that we spoke, there was a discussion about the removal of the trees on Elm, the Elm Street project because due to their dying, branches are dropping, they're heating up the grates underneath them. So after that meet, and I had an idea of putting back trees in that area. That's one of the things that I ditched was, instead of putting eight trees back in, let's put four trees back in. And I had a couple of other ideas as well. So after that meeting, the administrator and my supervisor, Phil, sat down and we talked about what we really need to do is go and check in with the business owners and see what they really, really would like to see happen. So the three of us came up with three different questions and that's on that first sheet that I gave y'all. And it's not completed completely because a lot of people just wanted to have a discussion about it right as we first brought up the topic. So Leah, my partner Leah and I went around and met with every single business owner on the street, all the way up and around the corner. One of the questions that we asked was, how do you feel traffic flow is working for your business? Can you think of improvements? Changing the traffic, the direct traffic pattern will not increase parking spots. That's one of the things we wanted to make sure people were aware of. It was an overwhelming response to this in terms of people concerned about traffic going the wrong way down the street. I personally saw that happen three times today, just when I was out here dealing with this flower bed. Just straight on, just driving on down the road, not a camper involved, it wasn't a semi or anything, you know, which is what we were told initially is that that was what the problem was, is a truck would start coming down and then what are they supposed to do? They have to just go ahead and go through. So people were concerned about vehicles pulling out if people were going down the street in the wrong direction. They're of course always concerned about elderly people not stepping out knowing the direction of the traffic and not thinking to look the other way because traffic's not supposed to be going that way. So there was a lot of discussion about that. They were really 50/50 on whether or not the traffic direction should change, but there were a lot of suggestions that talked about contacting Google and maybe part of the problem being how we direct traffic to the campground and how, how people get routed through the city. Another really strong suggestion was that on 4th Street, whether you're turning from the east or turning from the west, I think I've got my directions right there. Sorry if I don't post. Then there needs to be some parking spots eliminated there because the semis that are coming through, they're clipping vehicles, they're, people are saying that things are getting, it's too tight. So if those two spots on the right side of the road and the two spots on the left side of the road were removed, that may help the situation. Not help with parking, but help with the, the traffic flow part of it. So it just helps with that cramped turn radius, whichever direction they're coming, coming from. So that was the, the whole, pretty much the, in a nutshell, what they were thinking about traffic direction. Didn't really matter which way they were going, they were more concerned about doing it the right way and trying to reroute traffic to keep people out of that downtown area and the big rigs and deliveries and so forth. So the second thing that we talked about with trees, I was kind of shocked that literally not one person wanted the trees. Like, there were two people out of everybody that we interviewed and they said, oh, that's too bad, we're going to lose the trees. Anyway, so no more leaves, no more roots buckling up the cup. Like, they're like, okay, we're not going to do trees. Perfect. So overwhelmingly, get rid of the trees, do not replace trees, cover the holes that we have with concrete and move forward with, with new ideas. And those ideas are some street-side planters that we would put in and definitely some planters on the light holes as we go downtown. um, and definitely some planters on the light holes as we go downtown, in the downtown area, which I think would look beautiful. Um, I contacted a company called Earth Planner, because I actually saw these in person. They were very well-made, they were beautiful, um, super, super sturdy. The pox themselves have a 300-pound weight limit on them. Um, so you, and they are super efficient, because it's got a wicking system in them. Um, and it really eliminates the need to water every day, which is what we're doing on days like today. We're, we're watering every single thing every day. Um, so this would, because of the reservoir system in it, it would, it would just be a lot, lot more efficient as far as watering goes. And then they had some other options there, which I included in the packet. And there are like some rectangular planters, which are gorgeous, and then some round planters. So I just gave you guys a few examples of, of what that could look like in the downtown area. And the little map that we included here, we kind of went through here, you guys, and looked at the ones, like, we're not gonna put flowers in front of Walt's Theater, because it doesn't make sense, because he's got beautiful flowers already. So we kind of tried to, to go through and space out the beautiful part of it, and move things through, so that it's not like putting a planter in front of the flower shop. They've got tons of things out front, so it wouldn't make sense for us to put a planter there. So, this is just merely a suggestion of things that, you know, we can look at as we're going forward. Um, I did talk to the people at this Earth Planner's place, love dealing with them. They're, uh, they're, um, privately-owned business. All of their products have a lifetime warranty on them. Um, they gave us a small-city discount. And I know that the prices are kind of high, I shot for the moon. We decided to go ahead and include that in, this is the last, uh, section here, you guys. Uh, Alyssa and I decided to go ahead and include that price list that they gave us, just as, as a talking point amongst yourselves, when, and just an opportunity for you guys to, to look at that as we, as we move forward, if we decide to go that direction. Um, it would be no problem for us to modify the tank that we have on our truck, to be able to have a little pump on it, so that we could go through and water those planters. They're not gonna get dirt, none of these planters would be shedding dirt out of the bottom of them like our current ones do. Um, and it would, I just think it would be super, super efficient, and for a very, very long time, they would be nice-looking and, and, uh, add to the beautification of the downtown, I believe. Um, we redo, we redid this flower bed out here today, we pulled every, well, we didn't redo it yet, but we pulled everything out of it. Um, I'll be asking you guys separately, when I see you around town, what your suggestions are for what we wanna put back in there. It's probably not gonna happen this year, it's too late this season. Um, but CIP helped us with that project, and the project across the, the Arrowhead Lane up there. They did a fantastic job. They did work in two hours, what would've taken us five days. So, we're very, very fortunate to be able to work with those guys, and they loved it. They loved getting their picture taken, and they know they're gonna get a shout-out in the paper, so that was good, too. So I see good things happening for the downtown, and, and, uh, I think it, it's gonna be walkable, beautiful, safe, and just a lot cleaner. So, anybody have any questions for me?
Yes, great.
Do you suggest both sides, both sides want?
Say again?
Do you suggest both sides want?
We're, we're talking about kind of zigzagging down there, yeah. It was pretty heavy, everything was kind of decorated real heavy on the one side, so that was another thing that people said, "Could we have something down here on the corner?" And, and, and the answer is absolutely, we'll figure something out. Um, so we would use, we would use both sides. Paying attention, of course, to traffic patterns and, and, uh, how people need to be able to move around. We don't wanna put it right up next to the curb, and we don't want it all the way back to the building. Oh, and one of the other, the best things about this is, um, and I, I'll probably get fussed at if I don't say that, but when it's, when the flowers are all gone, and everything's done, these guys come in with the skid steers, and everything is moved. So it's nothing permanent, nothing that's gonna be in the way. It, it'll be a lot easier for snow removal and, um, more efficient for those guys.
Chris, why don't you make Phil happy?
Huh?
Try to make Phil happy?
Gotta make my boss happy, absolutely, yes.
Um, will those trees be removed yet this year?
Yes, thank you for asking, that's, that's part two here. So what we've, what we've talked about internally here, and wanna bring forward to council for consensus, is based on, um, the canvassing that, uh, Leah and Renee have done, um, it sounds like removal of the trees is what is desired by the business owners. What we've talked about internally is about how Public Works remove the trees yet this year, and even pouring the concrete in those patches for where the, um, existing grates are. So, by the end of the year, um, we would have Elm Avenue, the trees removed, and all the concrete poured. And then what Renee has assisted with is throughout our, our budget planning here, um, there would be a, a capital project of the amount of the $4,492. That would be then to set the city up then for utilizing all the planters moving forward. Um, so the, the one time, and so by having our own Public Works do the tree removal and do the sidewalk repair, we are saving so much money that we could then afford to, um, purchase the planters, and that would occur in 2025, prepping for spring of 2025.
Good answer. Can I add one more thing that I almost forgot? When we've talked about traffic patterns and stuff, when I did talk to the bank, um, on the corner, they asked that a sidewalk be put in between their parking lot and the sidewalk. Because as it stands right now, they've either gotta go all the way down past that rose bush and walk back, or they're walking across the grass, snow, whatever, in the wintertime.
So I am, right now, in conversations with Mid Dot, as I said, Mid Dot Parkway. It's not our driveway, it's not our parking lot, it's not our sidewalk. We have a maintenance agreement with Mid Dot, uh, to maintain that sidewalk. Uh, I'm hoping to have a, an answer that we don't like about that portion of the sidewalk, later to come, so. Just, but it, it wasn't very well-saw, well-wanted, like, so.
Where are you not gonna move?
Between the bank parking lot and the sidewalk on Arrowhead Lane.
The parking lot across to the west side of 73.
The big parking lot?
Okay. Just so they have a place to walk through, without going through the garden near the drive.
Because it's probably, they're walking across grass probably about this far from myself to the mayor.
That makes sense.
It would be great if they would offer to pay for that.
You reading my mind, or what?
Yeah, yes.
So I guess, I, I guess where I'm at with this whole thing is, if, if everyone wants the trees gone, which it sounds like if they do, if the city council wants the trees gone, do we have consensus for Public Works to remove those trees and make those concrete repairs yet this fall?
I'll be up to the council here in our next discussion, when you're done with the presentation.
Sorry.
I'm done, I'm done. Anybody else have any other questions?
I just wanna say thank you, from a, from a city perspective. Having staff willing to go out and canvas and, and, you know, boots-on-the-ground, have these tough conversations. Um, the business participation is excellent, and then, uh, the staff work as well is, is, this is how the process is supposed to work, so I can't say thank you enough.
I just wanna make one comment, too. When we did that re, re-beautification project, those trees never ended up being what was envisioned on the, um, you know, they were supposed to be tall and lush, and, and, um, I was a business owner down there for many years, and, yeah, they never really took off. They died, and people would replace them, and, yeah, it's, it's never been...
Can you tell me how many times they've been replaced? Cause that would be interesting for mine.
Well, I haven't owned the forest for 20-some years, but I owned it for 14 for that, but. It, it's, it was a lot, and it's, it just, uh, never amounted to what it was supposed to be, and...
It is tough for a tree to grow in that kind of environment, yeah.
I know that current trees that are there were specially bought, um, mini, mini trees. They were not to grow above the building, or the roofs are right about the roof level.
They were around halfway, they were replaced, yeah.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, so open us up for a discussion by the council, we have the information that we asked for. So, um, anybody? Discussion?
Were you asking for consensus, or a motion?
Any statements at all from anyone? You can do a motion, you can ask for consensus, um...
I would just say that we would ask people to go out, and, you know, Renee went out and talked to people. Uh, Mayor, you remember that these trees have, uh, lived what they're supposed to live, and unfortunately, when we get to that point, we have to make a decision, and, and we didn't have somebody get hurt. So this is a better option for the citizens, and it'll be a lot safer as well, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Great, I think this should come up.
I agree.
Walt, you got a business right there, I'm in favor of the removal. Is there at least one tree we can sit?
I appreciate you saying that.
I do.
I'll, I'll buy you a little baby tree that we can put in one of those containers. No promises how long it's gonna last, though.
Maybe Christmas tree.
There you go.
Okay, we have consensus to remove the trees with the information that came to us from the business owners. So, that's for a rat, Phil.
Oui.
And I know we're gonna hear about it. Because the public did not get it, but, um, you guys gave consensus, so we'll go. Um, as far as the planters and, uh, it sounds like the hanging ones, I, I did notice they have them in Cloquet. Noticed them immediately when I turned down Cloquet Avenue. And the guys happened to be out there watering them, and they had like a, you know, this great big, like a shepherd hook watering thing, and, uh, just going straight down the road watering them.
So Public Works has volunteered to make one of those for our gardeners. So, um, they should have the equipment that they need in order to take care of those, and we're gonna try and do that in-house.
So I guess the next question, or, do you want to approve what they have shown us as a design? Where the planters are, and the baskets, I'm guessing, and the circular ones?
That's all, that's all negotiable, you guys. We can, we can hash that out and talk it out, and do whatever y'all want to do.
Yes.
I, I was just gonna say that, I think that we could approve the purchase of them, but I think, once you get the trees down, and really strategically look at where it makes sense to put these things, you know, I don't wanna hold them to exactly where each one of these go, because, you know, you might get them and say, "Oh, this looks a lot better this way," and...
Correct.
So I, I, I think...
I appreciate that.
Um, by just approving the purchase of the planters and having them with their, um, gardening knowledge, decide where's the, um, best place to put them.
That was a motion, right?
Yes.
There is a second?
Always a question.
Yes.
Can we incorporate that it, it goes in the tw- uh, capital item in the 2025 budget for the gardening department?
To include then the 2025 capital improvement budget for the gardening.
That's second, very good. Oh, can we say aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, and if we waited till January 1st to do all this, that would work out even better. Just a joke.
Stop. Too soon to tell.
Take one of them, chill the trees out, turn it up to dead dogs.
Yeah, you'll get all the firewood out.
No, with roots at all.
It does. Can you take five C? Get that over here.
Um, five, five B.
Five B, um, move on with the Elm Avenue parking discussion. Assistant Administrator?
Uh, yes, so, um, some of this dialogue came about, um, from previous council discussion, and Councilor Lauer has brought forward, uh, these discussions previously, and then we took advantage of our canvassing with our city gardeners, to be able to have dialogue about parking. You know, I, I, the experience that was communicated to me was surprisingly, there, there were more issues communicated, um, regarding Fourth Street parking versus Elm parking. Um, and so I think we might have a couple of issues going on between both, between both areas. So, um, Superintendent Etner printed up a map, uh, so we could have collective dialogue regarding Elm Avenue and Fourth Street. Uh, one of the things that, um, Renee has brought forward is the elimination of a couple's parking spots on the bottom of Fourth Street. So we do have it in the budget to re-stripe this year, but prior to re-stripping, we wanted to know what that was gonna look like. Um, so wanna have dialogue from a council perspective about removing a couple of the spots at the bottom of Fourth Street on both sides. That gives a bigger turning radius, um, and/or, you know, eliminates some of that difficulty if there are deliveries being done to local businesses that come up Fourth Street, and that does happen frequently. You know, there, there were discussions had regarding the parking on both sides of Fourth Street. Um, there's, can be, at certain times of the day, so much of a need. Um, you know, it, it would be difficult to eliminate, but that was brought forward, um, as an idea for council to discuss, eliminating one side or the other. Um, the complaints that were communicated to the, um, city staff was that, you know, whenever you're coming up Fourth Street, and there's parking on both sides, and there's, you know, larger vehicles, or you're in a larger vehicle, that it's oftentimes a really tight fit. Um, so there's that issue that we can discuss and solve and brainstorm about. And then back to Elm Avenue, um, as previously mentioned, not a, a, a really strong feeling about changing the direction of traffic was had, at least with the conversations thus far. Um, but doing a better job of communicating how the flow is supposed to go, and maybe utilizing other resources such as Google, um, to help manage, um, traffic direction for anybody who is, who is visiting the city. Renee, did you get any feedback regarding limitations, like an hour or couple-hour limit with parking on Elm Avenue? Or anything of that nature?
No one, no one mentioned that. No one mentioned that to me. I don't know how you could monitor that, given our current situation anyway.
It, it would be really difficult.
It would be really, really difficult to monitor that.
I was surprised that there wasn't a, a strong, um, opinion on reversing and or changing. Um, so it seems like, it was kind of joked about, like, "Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna change it back." You know, just that kind of general banter, um, was common. So, it's really up to council whether or not they wanna make any modifications to traffic direction. Um, otherwise, it's just how we improve the parking scenario, and what does that look like?
You know, if we, if we have a, if it's a 50/50, then I wouldn't say don't change anything. I would think you would wanna get an overwhelming response, "Yes, let's change it," to actually do it.
Right.
Although they'd say at this point, "Keep it," but that doesn't mean you, you don't have to change it in the future. Chris?
Um, I guess I really don't have any comment on Elm Street, but Fourth Street, I have also been one of those people that are driving up there, and even with my car, cannot get through there, or feel like I'm, you know, scraping on each side. I'm wondering, I, I too watched a camper pulling, or a truck pulling, a camper pulling a boat, tried to make that corner, and obviously he couldn't, so he probably was one of them that had to go straight up Elm, because I saw them at the other intersection. So I kinda am in agreement with taking away a couple of those spots, but then I'm thinking, is there a way that, because we have a lot of employees that park on Fourth Street on the other side, can we ask them to park on Douglas? I mean, we have this whole other road here that does not get parked on that often, but if we could remove some of the, the staff that parks along that hole in front of the Anderson Egg building, that would alleviate some parking, you know, add some parking that we might have to take away here. I also would suggest that we get a, that same camper I was watching, I followed it from Barnum, and it came, turned to come down sixty-one, and I thought, oh, it's gonna turn down by Veterans Park and go to the campground that way. I would suggest we put a sign there, somewhere on one side of the road that says, moves like campground two blocks that way, you know, and get some signage there, because that would alleviate people coming in from the north, going into town, because then he went to the stoplight, he must have fallen into the road, and then that was the one that was trying to get around the corner, and he could easily just, you know. So I think if we get that kind of signage over there, and then ask that employees that are parking along in front of Anderson, maybe move to the Douglas Avenue side of that, the, whatever, there, that old telephone building, or whatever it is, you know, along there, that, that may add, from what we take away at the beginning of the street.
Yes, sir.
In looking at this, the suggestion was made about taking away two on each side as we're looking, as we're turning onto Fourth Street. If you eliminate one on each side, and you paint it designated as so, the first, the next two could be signed off as compact vehicles only, which would then give you a lot more space, and then it could be enforceable as well by law enforcement that we have. And then I think that would leave you quite a bit of issues coming up there, and then you're not losing two spots.
Yes, sir. I understand what Chris is saying here about parking on Douglas. I've always thought that there is spare room where the old water tower used to be in that block to the, in that lot to the, to the south of there. I've always wondered if that could be turned into the parking lot for city employees, or for whoever, for special events, or anything like that, but obviously, you'd have to create a parking lot, and that has expenses. And there's also a lot of utility poles in that area there, but I, I don't know if it just had to be looked at, and whether or not that could be turned into a parking lot or not. And I understand what Doug is saying there with those camp, compact cars. I wouldn't like to see us lose four parking spots downtown. That's, that's too much. And one of, I'll, I'll speak as a, as a theater owner here. One of the problems that we have at the theater is that we have vehicles that are parking in front of the theater, and they're there for days and days at a time. You could have them there for a week even. It depends upon who's living in those apartment complexes across from the theater. Sometimes I, I think that the, the person that is renting those out, you know, like, we have an apartment up above the theater, and the conditions that I have to rent that is that we rent it to only single occupancy, and then we demand that they only have one car. But we also, the theater also has a private parking lot, so we have them park, you know, on our own property, which takes the vehicle off of the main street out there. The apartment across from the theater there, where these people are, are from, they do have two parking spots back behind their business, but then there, there are three apartments up above, and if he rents that out to a couple, then they each have a car, and you end up having six vehicles. And so that leaves four of them out parked on the street, and they're always parking in front of the theater. It's, normally, you know, you have people coming and going, and I try to talk to the people there and explain some of this to them, just, just to see if they could park somewhere else, and sometimes they're accepted to that, but most of the time, they're not. And, and you don't have any standing as a business owner to say, hey, I can't have your vehicle parked in front of my business for three, four, five days, you know, and when we're running movies, we have a large crowd of older folks that come, and then the older folks are, are parking a lot farther away, and they're having, having to walk, because these, these sites are never open in front of our business. And that's why I had brought up, you know, ideas of having two-hour parking downtown, or, or I've also thought of just having customer parking downtown from like eight in the morning to eight in the evening. And, you know, I understand the, the problem of enforcing it, but you wouldn't have to have the police officers if, enforcing it every day. You would, they would enforce it if you have a problem case, if you have somebody that is continuously parking in front of your business, and if you had some kind of rules, the business owners would have some, something to stand on when they, when they go and talk to these people, saying, hey, I need this parking spot for my business. And I just think that it's, that it's kind of unfair that, that certain, you know, with these apartment places, that they're taking up so much of this parking downtown. I think that if the guy looked for more, you know, made some more conditions on some of these apartments downtown on, like, you know, while only rent it to single occupancy and things like that, and you can only have one vehicle, that would go a ways to solving this issue. But I, I've been dealing now, you know, it used to be two-hour parking downtown. That's how it always was before, until they changed the first, they changed it to the one-way, and then they took down those, those parking signs. So I mean, this has been done that way in, in the past, and I just would like to see some, something done where these individuals aren't parked out there for such long periods of time.
So you want meters?
No, no meters.
Well...
Greg? I see no problem with having posted for either three-hour parking. What's the difference? If there's a sign?
We did have...
Ninety, ninety, ninety percent of the people obey what it says. It's only that ten percent that don't, and sooner or later they get caught.
I know with the signs are down there, I remember that. And I don't remember anyone having complaints about it, but it did help the officers to notice at the end of the day which ones are staying, and it did help and clear out. They had them park up in the big parking lot behind us up here, and that's where their apartment people were going, is up here. And it is well-lighted. It's not a, you know, a dark lot. So I, I can see putting a three-hour parking sign.
One thing that, you know, we're, one of the reasons why we're removing the trees is to help it make it quicker and faster to plow downtown, but if you put up parking signs, you would be putting a post up, and then that will be in the way. But I thought, maybe you could put the parking signs up on the telephone poles, I mean, the light poles that are already downtown. If, but I don't know if they're spaced properly, you know, to do that. If the spaces in between them would be too great, but...
So the light poles are still staying there though?
Yes.
And they're up closer to the curb than anything?
Mm-hmm.
We can add signs, we can, we can put signage on those poles. It's not a big deal. What do you guys decide?
You, you will have some dirt to put in and...
Exactly what I was just thinking, was...
Before the cement goes down.
Or at least leave a sleeve for the post to go to the curb.
Correct.
But, but by adding more posts, and that's making the plowing more, or snow removal more difficult, would it not?
I mean, no worse than going around those trees and those grates right now. You know, and I mean, the reason we're taking the trees down is because they're dying.
Yes.
Not to, not to improve snow removal, or, or it's, the snow wall. The base of what it takes for snow wall.
That was a benefit, though, I mean...
Oh, definitely, absolutely.
Is this owner supposed to clean the sidewalk?
Yeah. And it's a wide sidewalk. I think of it every time I'm shoveling snow up there.
Is there a way to put signage on the existing poles with arrows?
We could, we could put signage in those pads that we're gonna pour back in. We can set it back off the curb a little bit further. So where those trees are, it's about a five-by-five opening.
I mean, you know, you wouldn't necessarily wanna pull for every single spot. So like, how do you, you know, is there a way to do it with minimal...
Normally, at the beginning, up above, up here, at the start of the street, industry downtown here, and maybe in the middle of here, I would think you'd only need like two...
If, if you did it that way, then you could use the, the light poles to put them on, and you wouldn't have to put in any new posts.
No posts.
So when they're sticking out and you drive by them, you can hit them?
Right.
Perfect.
I mean, we could come up with something. I mean, we have...
Yeah.
We'll have poles there that we're filling anyway, and we'll have posts to utilize if we have to. If we have to drill through concrete with the corbs, it's not the end of the world. So I'm not opposed to it. I, I mean, honestly, I would say at least one sign every four spaces, if you want this to work, because one on each end isn't gonna, that's not gonna cut the mustard. There's just twenty, there's just twenty spots in there, deep team spots, something like that, because it's decent amount.
Any other discussion by the council? Do you, do you wanna just, yes, I was gonna ask for consensus on the parking spots.
Well, I was just gonna ask why they went away. Why did those signs ever go away?
I don't, I don't know myself.
They just never got put up. They weren't part of the beat of...
The streets gate happened probably thirty years ago.
Yeah, and I don't remember the city ever coming around and talking to the businesses. I mean, I was, my brother was running the theater at that time, but I don't remember...
He was asked that all employees park either up here or across Seventy-three. That was asked, and ones that could park in the back of the businesses. And that happened probably like maybe five years, if you remember, Chris, and we haven't done that in a long time. Just like you're asking the employees to park over here. It was a, we, it seemed like we did that every five years to remind everyone of that.
I think it would free up a lot of space on each street.
In fact, I think we sent communication to every business in asking to tell employees to please park either this big one or the one across, so that customers had easy access to the businesses. So direction from the council? A reminder, a suggestion, have a reminder go up to the businesses, and also, we should make a decision on the, the two spots on Fourth Street. Greg, did you have the...
Well, I mean, you're talking about three-hour parking. Do you want to just place the three-hour parking downtown move flight? It's, it's everything, I mean, that takes care of your downtown for parking.
You have to sign all the downtown...
Well, I mean, what are you talking, twenty signs to cover move flight? Or twenty to twenty-five signs?
Let, let Phil decide how many things he can sign to cover. It would be just on Seventy-three. We're here and on Fourth Street.
You got three, you got one street, two streets?
Yeah.
I think if, I think as many signs as we could put on an existing pole, the better, because we don't wanna be all tacky and start...
Probably, you probably can't even sign on Seventy, well, Seventy-three turns up, but the other one neither. You'd have to have permission to put any signs on.
It could be on the, on the highway, so...
We'd have to have permission.
Only on the streets, city, city streets, so not basically the street, that's street.
Well, we're talking mostly about Elm and Fourth being the top of the streets.
That's it.
For turning and for overnight parking for a couple of apartment buildings that are on the top.
So first of all, the park, the two parking spots, any suggestions or motion?
Motion. That we eliminate the first one on each side, the Four Gary's side and Starbury's outside, the first one on Fourth Street, and we make the second on both sides, the compact parking only with signage. If, if it's able to be affixed to the building, we get permission. Somehow designate that. That way you'd free up a wider turn radius, and we're not losing four spots.
Do I have a second?
It's gotta be the west end of Fourth Street. Impressive.
It's too loud.
Sorry.
What did you do?
We're learning direction finally. Like, east, west, north, south, it's not hard, there's only four of them. And she's just like, that's gonna be on the west side, right? And you're like, yes! Forget it, please, sorry.
Please, tell father.
Yes, there is no wrapping right in the office, it is north, south, east, west.
Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
That first parking spot on the side of Four Gary's on Fourth Street, they use that mostly for their delivery vehicle, don't they? Their delivery of people? So...
But I mean, how hard is it for them to move up two spots? I mean...
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that's something we should maybe just... I know the people at the newspaper said that the two spots closest to their building always have renters on them. Just adding my rule. That that's where the renters park, in those two spots next to that side of the building.
Well, that's with that three-hour signage in conjunction with the changes you're making now, hoping to solve that. Just good to know. Did anyone else have any? Greg?
Yeah, Greg's second, I guess.
Did you have a question or a comment?
Only five seconds, it's a motion.
Okay, so we have a second. Any further questions, discussion? Yes.
I will send out a communication to city staff with some additional parking options to pull all city staff off of Fourth Street.
And I, I guess I just don't wanna see a bunch of new poles put up in downtown streets, because that is not gonna be...
I'd rather have the trees.
I don't want a bunch of new poles put in for parking signs.
Street signs, you don't want posts?
I'd rather have them on...
Can we just do some on the curb? Can we pace some on the curb?
They're good until it snows.
Yeah.
Because you do see that down south. They do put that signage on the curb, and it's real easy to read, but end of October, we won't see... end of October, we won't see it again until...
I mean, if you had to put one in the middle, how many like street lights are on that side of the?
That's a good question, I don't know.
We're not blue.
I, I think there's a way, I, I, I agree with you. If it was only two, I mean, if there was three, you could put one, two, three.
There's like a lot, it seems like about four of them on the side.
I think that would be ample to have enough signage there.
You already have a handicap sign, so you just add a sign below that one. And then the other four, or four spots down, you add one, and another four spots, and then now you're already down to here.
Perfect, there's five.
Five total or five aside? Five total?
Can't hear, five total light poles on that side, yes.
Yeah, see, on one side?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The poles. Motion carried. Now that was, uh, the parking. Now for, uh, that was it.
Mayor, can I say one more thing that we've been doing up and down the street? There is a, a handicap ramp. I don't even know if it's wide enough to even hold a wheelchair, but it's a dip in the, you know, dip in the curb or whatever.
Ped ramp, yeah.
Ped ramp. It is directly in front of a parking spot. I don't know if anybody has thought about that or been aware of that. I don't know if that's supposed to be an empty spot.
Is, can you see where the painting is on the side? Because I, I think it was, let's say to the, I'll say to the north side of it, and I think there were supposed to be stripes there. So when you pull up, the, you know, thing can come down, wheelchair out, and then they go.
It's about halfway down, Phil.
Yeah.
So when we're striping, we can make sure that there's no parking spot in front of that pet ramp?
Well, I think there was a painted area and it had the stripes on the, showing that you, you know, it's for somebody to come, have one of those gates that comes down and they roll out and...
That is not being utilized that way.
Yeah.
Is there a handicap parking right there?
There would be a handicap next to it, and then you have a striped area for the wheelchair.
I don't think we ever had a handicap parking in the middle of that block. It's either, it's a beginning and an end.
So it's a, it's a parking spot right in front and someone is currently parked there right now?
So we have no access to that block?
When, when those, when the painting is done, um, you know, and it originally could have been there. The striping.
I, I don't remember it ever being there.
So we can have it hatched?
I don't, I don't remember
Yeah.
There ever being there and I...
Just locked up.
And like the top of the block is handicap and at the end is handicap.
But if, there should be one to the left of that, so if it is a van, that it can open up and they can call.
Could that be just an access to the sidewalk for the winter? People, you know, once you...
It could be just a cross area too, from this side to that side.
Yeah, I can't remember it. I just think of it as a spot that there's a handicap next to it and then the striped deal.
It's never been...
Is there a handicap next to the pet ramp?
Fourth side, driver's side, or passenger side?
Driver's side or passenger's side, which side do you want?
Or both.
Well, it's usually on the, on the passenger's side, the, the way they come over behind it.
Open enough then they would be able to get open.
Yeah.
Passenger's side?
Correct. Thank you.
Was there anything else with this item?
We, the motion was just for the parking spots.
Correct.
To, to remove them by Ford Gary's in that grade?
Correct.
What about three hour parking downtowns?
Well, I think, I think...
I didn't say anything about signage for three hour parking.
That was the other part that we have to act on. Do we have a, a motion or more discussion on parking timelines or other whatever for the council?
Could there be a, a, would it, like, when we had the two hour parking before, I, I think it was from six in the morning to like six at night. And then if you wanted to park downtown during the nighttime, you could. You know what I'm saying? So is, I mean, I'm...
Let me, let me ask Phil this. If we did that, you still would have cars that you would be plowing in?
Yeah.
Would it be smarter to have the two hour or twenty-four and seven?
Okay, that's just a...
I'm just, I'm just thinking that. We got, we have such a short winter. So the plowing, the plowing is a problem there, cause you do plow people in.
Constantly.
On an average, would you say in the five cars?
It's between five and eight every star.
Were you talking just on Elm or Elmentor's?
Elmentor's.
Yeah.
That is a big problem, although it is.
They would have to park in the back here, in the house street or apply the, the old power plant.
Get noticed that you're gonna plow.
And, and they'll be plowed in there, so what's the difference if they're on the main road? That's just a suggestion, it's council discussion.
I think two is a little too old.
Yeah, two hours.
Three hours?
Yeah, for sure. People are downtown, they're, you know, it's not that big of a downtown.
Some of your movies go longer than two hours.
Yeah, some movies are two and a half, three.
We have to tow all those people away and get them out of there.
Be down there.
Four hours is half the business stay for business, I think that's, I think that's sufficient, but I don't have a business downtown.
I'll make them...
I was gonna say, I think four hours is a little excess for, for, to have customers parking for four hours. Because, um, you know, when I own the floors, it's, people would circle and circle and circle and, you know, it, it ended up being that, then people that have been in Portwood for half a day would start their, their show. So I would, I would tend to go back to two hour, three hours at the most, then you...
Greg?
I'd say three hour parking on, on the two, on Elm and on Fourth Street.
Okay.
Motion Friday?
Monday through Friday.
There's, you need it on the weekends as well.
Or you might as well take seven days a week, because that way it creates no problem for Phil.
Yep. Cause there are these businesses, some of them aren't open on the weekend.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do three hour parking on Elm and Fourth Street.
Monday to Friday, Monday, seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Before I ask for a vote, we will have to make sure that all employees have all the businesses notice, including our own. So just be aware of that, you're, what you're doing to any employees, all of downtown.
Well, that, that has been established when we did the edification that employees should not be parking in the, on the roads for customers.
Employees and business owners.
But that wasn't my question. We had a motion before on this parking that we never voted on. Even made a motion, you seconded it, and now we made a new motion hourly, so we need to...
So, so Doug made a motion, Greg seconded it, and then there was never a vote. And that was just to remove the first spots, have the second spots be compact only.
Okay. I was just checking you guys, just if you're awake.
Yeah.
So do we have, all in favor, say aye.
On the first one?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Now we have another motion on the floor. Um, do we state that motion again, please?
Uh, three hour parking on Elm Avenue and Fourth Street, seven days a week.
And we had a second. Who seconded it?
I did.
And we have a second.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't wanna do it all.
Do we want, do you want all Fourth Street or do you just want Fourth Street back from Elm to Douglas?
I'm, I was assuming two Douglas.
Yeah.
So we better state that. Correct, correct your motion, please, and then I'll ask you to...
One more thing before you press it. Do we want to, uh, I guess wait on the implementation of this motion until all business owners and tenants are notified? So we can say effective October first or something like that? Or do you wanna just vote? Because you're gonna have people that aren't gonna be notified by the time we're starting?
By January first.
January first?
Yeah.
Stop.
Like I said, January first and he's tired.
I just wanted to know when, what date I can start complaining. Okay, I guess, we're right in the middle of this now. So you, um, if we're going, you're right, you're exactly right. We need to state up to what point. And if it's to Douglas, we need to correct the motion and the second.
And add an implementation date?
Correct.
Well, what, if, what date would people like to see?
I'd just say October.
Well, I should at least...
That's only two weeks.
Phil's got a question.
Yes, there's, uh, there's a, there's a lot of signing stuff I gotta do here as far as ordering.
January one.
Like, I will have all the signs here if I have October first, but I sure won't have them installed, so...
So what's your timeline, Phil?
January one. It's gonna be cold with the signs up. As long as the poles are in the ground, I don't care.
Well, are we, are we gonna use as many existing structures as we can?
Yes.
We're only using, using light poles.
So all of these are using light poles?
Well, on Elm, the other ones you probably gonna put on buildings because you can't even probably put a pole in.
And there's like poles up four too. Building needs an idea.
I would, I would suggest, Phil, when they're putting this new concrete in, if you put just a couple of those pole spots in there with the, the pipe receptacle in there, it could, it's for any future project that you have, rather than trying to drill out something in the future. If you, if you don't use it, you have it there.
It's just a sleeve, it's just a hole through the concrete, that's all it is. And we can fill it with dirt, we can even cap it with mortar that's like concrete but very soft. Not soft enough, people are gripping it, but seal it off. And then if we have to put a sign in, we bust a hole through the mortar and it's not like jackhammering up the concrete. And that's what I was talking about originally when we were gonna pour all those spots. Because those signs hanging on those streetlights, they're, that's gonna attack you. That's just my opinion.
Why is it going to motion?
Good opinion. Good opinion.
Well, it's worth, we don't allow anything behind them except their Christmas and their flags, because they do take away from those decorative labels.
Like flower baskets.
And flower baskets, yeah.
So would November first work?
Well, yeah, we can, we can make that work. October first is not even, it's nineteen days away, so...
I know, I'm just trying to think of their fingers.
We have gloves, we'll be okay.
Care in for the future.
Okay, I'll change, change my motion for three hour parking on Elm Ave, Elm Avenue and on Fourth Street to Douglas. Seventies a week. And we'll motive, we'll have till November first.
Second?
Second.
Alright. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. So we gotta make sure that every business and all employees know this and, uh...
I'm so angry.
Changes, we'll change it for everyone working downtown.
I think just on Fourth Street.
Yeah. Where will you park?
I'd park right in my office, I don't know.
I know. So then will be, I'm here.
I actually do.
See, there you go. We can make a sign for you.
You know, one thing that we...
Short, short workdays, I can live with that.
Is that back door always unlocked because the people do in the middle of winter, they wanna go the shortest route they can to get to their business.
So, um, all employees have a key to this back door, so my communication to, to city staff is gonna be to utilize the back lot. Um, and, you know, we can even look at striping when we're re-striping up here as well for, for in here. So they will have access to the back door.
What's the back lot?
It's all, all back here.
Behind Stowe's then?
Um...
You know, the...
The credit union?
You know, right, right here, Yvonne has her business.
Yeah.
And then, then the, um...
Credit union?
Credit union, that whole big block there.
That's what I was wondering.
I thought that was credit union.
Yeah, I thought that was the credit union slot. If it's not, then we should have signage.
If they don't like all the people parking there, they'll tell us.
Is it the credit union slot though?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Cause that was gonna be my first suggestion, but I'm like, I thought that was a private...
Right now, anyone, they have, they don't have to be signed to say, no parking or customers only. So you see people parking here from all over down here up there.
I guess I would encourage our people if they could park at least in the summer on Douglas, so it doesn't look so, we're not taking advantage of them.
We did ask, originally, we, we asked our employees to park in the parking lot right across from the power plant.
Yeah.
Because that is a city parking lot.
Yeah.
That's where we requested in patch years.
Yeah.
We could check with the credit union on that, uh, Douglas and just see if they could, would be open to allowing us to utilize maybe that last row.
They may, and it's just, would be fine with me, but not with Todd. Or, Phil, because we do, we do the parking lot plowing, correct?
Which one?
For First Bank, First National Bank.
First National we do, yeah.
And they, because we do that, they allow us to use it.
Uh, us or the whole city as public parking? Parking, I believe, if you remember.
I'm just stating that.
We also have a lot right here, outside the library.
It fills up with...
That's kind of a senior venue.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if there's way to negotiate with, uh...
Yeah. We've got ideas.
I don't think you feel more work?
That's okay, you're doing pretty good tonight. Kidding.
Was there any other discussion now on either one of these? Motions haven't really been passed.
Did we pass the last one?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you vote?
Yes.
I can't remember, okay.
Six E, Seventy-three Phase Two Trail Project, that's the...
Uh, yes, so we've, um, finalized the route. Um, council had the, the map of the Phase Two Trail in, in the packet. Um, some of the activities that are ongoing, um, we've had a coordination meeting now with all parties involved. So, um, it was great to get on the same page regarding, um, the DNR, Min Dock, the county, um, so on and so forth. So we've established who the primary contacts are for each, um, you know, a system moving forward. Design reviews are taking place. The city invited a member of the ATB club to attend the most recent engineering meeting. And so we're getting on the same page with the ATB club. Uh, this proposed route will run side by side with the ATV trail, um, in front of the state facilities. So we've had coordination on how to delineate between the two and, and make sure that there's, um... and make sure that there's proper signage and direction for the pedestrian versus the motorized trail. So those types of coordination efforts are happening in the background as well. Project bidding timeline at this point in time is February of 2025. The timeline for letting the project is early March. Major construction in May of 2025, and then looking at final completion in the late summer, very early fall of 2025. So lots of progress made. Some of the current activities are still wrapping up easements with the state facilities. There's also an easement from MINDOT as well. And so we're learning a lot about that process with state entities and a lot of coordination happening concurrently. So I wanted to make sure council had an update as far as the finalized route and what it looks like moving forward here. Any questions?
Just a statement, we'll see this will be completed next year. Can we just talk to the council? You should be thinking about the next grants that may come out after the year. You should be, just a heads up, to be looking for those always because there's always monies that will be spent on grants for trails. If you don't get them, another city will. So if you keep an eye on it, there are areas that we can't put trails into tying into what we have. Just a heads up.
Absolutely. This project received over $700,000 worth of grant money. And so it's fully funded by grant money and it wouldn't be happening without. So that's excellent. And thank you for bringing that forward, Nisha.
Because other cities will do it.
Yeah.
You know, if they will, then money will go.
We did have Bill Carlson once request that we put a trail into the nursing home area there.
Yeah. And as all of you have seen, there are quite a few people in wheelchairs that do run up and down seventy-three, back and forth to the nursing home and the rehab center. Just a heads up. Under five D Riverside Arena Cooling System Replacement Update?
Yep, so all the equipment is out, all the old equipment. I have a picture of the new chiller towers on Page seventy-six in your packet. Compressors, don't believe the compressors are there yet. If they aren't, they're going in shortly. If they are, they got delivered today and they're sitting in boxes in the morning. Regardless, the outside cement is poured. There's a bunch of pumps and a bunch of mechanical equipment that's in there ready to be installed. They'll be starting to start that piping here.
Any problems come up? No, it did go really well.
So far, it's been real.
When do you actually charge them? Not till the compressors are in?
When do we charge, let fire pop?
Yeah.
Once the project's completed and the three guns all put back in the system and everything's balanced, fire them up.
Before, probably before October first.
Hopefully.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ice is scheduled to go in the second week of October currently.
They are?
It is.
Because they usually start ice the second week of October. So there'll be a short deadline there.
We are coming down to the wire, but it's fantastic that it's all coming together. Decades in the making, we're excited.
All right, thank you. Six, new business. Six A four-nine dot two-five dot two-zu twenty-four, Special City Council Meeting Discussion.
Oh, yes, so I wanted to make council aware, I included in the packet a communication from the audit firm. So originally, the plan was to have them present at the city council meeting. We are still waiting on our audit financial reports. With that being said, we have a preliminary budget to present, but need to have the 2023 audit in order to finalize even our preliminary budget. It's just the responsible thing to do as far as having all the data prior to moving forward with that process. So there will be a need for a special meeting on September twenty-fifth. You'll see at a later agenda item, there are additional needs for that meeting. I've tried to kind of highlight some of the activities that occur at that meeting. And then there's, you know, time dates and things of that nature later on in the packet. At that point in time, we can give a preliminary budget presentation, set the initial property tax levy. There is a need to sign a new lease agreement with the Hockey Association. So if you remember, we only did a two-year term. Those leases need to be in a tight format in order to be able to revisit them and make changes, adequate changes when necessary. So we're coming up on renewal of that. And then there'll be some needs for a variance and rezone request and transfer of land to the Economic Development Authority associated with the residential development. So I'll touch on those items later. We could be adding agenda items here. It won't be posted until next week, so we'll kind of try and finalize. I just wanted to give visibility to some of the items that do need to be discussed on the twenty-fifth and give an update as far as budget is concerned and setting the initial levy.
Any questions for the council?
If the firm can come and present that day, we will absolutely incorporate that as well.
Moving on to six B, Moose Lake Residential and Development Discussion.
Yes, so in the packet, I tried to include as many items as I could to just kind of give visibility of some of the activities that are currently happening. It's looking like there's going to be, you know, multiple phases to the project, and that is something that has been discussed. There will be a need to engage in, from a planning commission standpoint as a city, to discuss a variance request and a rezoning of the land affiliated with Phase One. So I've included those notices. Those have already been posted and published, and the planning commission meeting has been scheduled. What we've learned from a legal standpoint is the state has subdivision statutes that we cannot circumvent. So we can have variances to our own subdivision ordinances, but they don't... We don't have the authority to give a variance and/or circumvent the city's, or excuse me, the state's subdivision statutes. So with that being said, we've worked on a plan with the engineers and the attorneys and the developer. State statute says anything five, any subdivisions resulting in five or more lots requires that it be platted. So we have to stay under the five threshold with our initial transaction in order to accommodate that state statute. So what we're going to do is, that leaves us four lots that we can actively access and participate and engage in while we're plating in the background. And so the idea is, with the timeline that's been presented in the packet to council, we will engage in those four lots initially. What that will look like is a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. That's going to be for a variance request and a rezoning affiliated with those four parcels. After that, the city council will meet that afternoon. That will be reviewing the planning commission's recommendations for the variance and the rezoning and also transferring the land to the EDA at that time. So knowing all of the benchmarks that we had to meet, I sat down and mapped out a complete schedule that accommodates all of our public notice requirements, all of our posting requirements, and then how do we strategically have these meetings scheduled in a timetable to be able to get the developer the land in October to move dirt? And that's the goal. So that special meeting will occur Wednesday, September twenty-fifth at eleven AM. The next step will then be the EDA selling the land to the developer. And so that will... That meeting will occur on Monday, September thirtieth at noon. That'll happen through a resolution and lead. And then the last item will then be the city council engaging in a development agreement with the developer himself. So this timeline accommodates a Wednesday, or excuse me, an October schedule, October second, Wednesday, October second, as the final transaction in this process. The developer then can access the land in October. He has been given this timeline and this sequence of events to then have things ready so that early October, he can continue to move forward and get one unit built yet this year. And into the winter, that unit can then be accessed and marketed, and the public and community can see what will be available. And we'll start in the background, working on the plating that's required, the wetland impacts process, application for the entire plan, because that's what they want to see. And we'll have everything prepped then for next spring to be able to continue to move forward with more units being built. That's a lot of information, I know. There's no wetland impacts with this first process, so there was no need to engage yet. We're staying under the subdivision requirements from the state. The developer gets access to land and can start building yet this year. And then in the background, we continue to engage in the activities that are needed in order to move forward with additional building for the residential development.
Any questions, council?
Yes, sir. So the area that we're talking about, is that this?
So that is a close-up snapshot of the... Of all of the lots affiliated with the East Moose Horn Drive. So yes, the area in red will be the first land that's sold from the EDA to the developer.
Do you know where the pumps are at... Quick trip? If you go straight south, that would be the first lot. Now, if he can build the structure now, when the weather, and close it up, when the weather gets bad, he can finish the inside and then market it and get a, have an example for people to look at of what he is gonna be building down the rest of Phase One, into Phase Two.
Right. Ideally, the city wanted to engage in ten lots with the initial transaction, and we just can't. Because even, we could, but then he would have to do the plating as well. And so that really doesn't save any time. The best way to get him land in order to be able to develop and build on immediately is this route. And we've run a million scenarios through the attorneys and the engineers and with the developer, and this is best case scenario. And we'll continue to work in the background to just move the process forward for additional land purchases and additional building.
Do you need consensus or motion on this timeline?
I don't believe so because we have so many meetings packed into the next six weeks here between now and October second. We are gonna continue to post and publish and are planning things in the background to meet all of the timelines. So those processes will happen through our publishing and posting and our meetings. But thank you, Nisha.
So then, any questions on the development plan? Thank you. Excellent work on it. Moving on to six C, the MPCA FY twenty-five Implementation Grant for Wastewater Resilience Discussion?
Yeah, so the city staff was notified of a new, you know, opportunity from the MPCA regarding a grant opportunity for wastewater resilience. And we've engaged with our city engineers on it. I've included a communication between city staff and our engineers. There's $10 million worth of funding available. The max award is 1.5 million. There's a 10% match requirement. And so what our dialogue has been thus far is submitting a proposal or the application in regards to a lining project and what that looks like. Depending upon how much money was received, the 10% match would be accommodated by our annual capital in our sewer fund. So they are actively engaging in building this application for us. It's exciting, it's a new opportunity. They think we have a really great story with the state facilities and the hundred-year-old clay pipes and the stipulations of what the MPCA is looking to accomplish with this grant in particular aligns really well with the lining project. And so we're gonna go after some additional money. And I just wanted council to be aware that we're working on this in the background.
We definitely would have the matching funds for 10%.
Yeah.
This would be a great opportunity. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you. Moving on to sixteen, Moose Lake Area Fire District Protection District In-Kind Services Discussion.
The city engaged in a joint meeting with the fire district a few months back. Since then, city, myself and Superintendent Edner have been consistently attending fire district meetings, wanting to stay engaged and continue to work on some of the issues that are longstanding between both entities. And so it has come about through the attendance of other meetings that there's a desire from both sides to kind of put on paper what has always occurred between both entities but was never defined or never, you know, never written down. And so they asked the city to put on paper, what are the in-kind services that we currently provide? And so I worked with Superintendent Edner on this and submitted it to the fire district. They had it to review for their meeting last night. We are supposed to receive one in return. I have not seen it yet, but I did communicate. I'm looking forward to getting that information from them. We, both entities, had agreed to provide that documentation. So I am looking forward to getting that. But I wanted to give council visibility to what the in-kind services are at this time. There's a couple of components in play. Their sheriff debt, that debt service and/or our current lease with the fire district goes through 2029. And so all of, you know, all of these services and our activities can be defined now, but the relationship really doesn't change until 2029. At that time, in 2029, the fire district can engage in a new lease agreement with the city. The city has first right of refusal to the space, and our rent is capped in perpetuity at 5% of operation costs. So it's in the city's interest to make sure that we're doing our part to continue to have their operating costs below. It's good partnership and collaboration regardless. These are the in-kind services that we provide. Some things that are not listed, we're really conservative in our numbers. Fuel, things like that are not figured into these numbers. In some cases, labor. And so this is a kind of a thousand-foot snapshot and a good place to start. And we wanted them to have visibility to what we were doing. Utilities are not included on here. There is an issue as far as water is concerned. The access point to water at the emergency response center is not metered for filling trucks. So we really don't have a way to substantiate these savings without knowing the usage. And so that's something that we can talk about in collaboration with the district. If there's any interest in what that looks like, we're probably gonna have to engage in some type of metering opportunity so that we can assess that savings that the city is providing as well. So a couple of items that we have yet to be hashed out. That's an update on where we're at currently, and I wanted council to have visibility.
They don't have a sewer bill either. It's tied in with the water, I know. But they have been made aware all these years that they are getting free water. Now, they have a, it's been thrown back at me when I was on the board. Well, a city, cities always give fire department free water. And I told them that's correct when the department is owned by the city. However, this is not owned by the city, there's partnerships. However, this is not owned by the city and its partnerships, so it's a district. Now, we do supply that water free, but the other members of the district do not compensate us for that. So, it is more than just the city of Moose Lake. So, that, the water and sewer definitely should be, even if you don't have a
Monetary.
A monetary, because we've, we've never metered it. It should always be put in a list like this because as time goes on, people leave and others don't remember.
Unbelievable.
And new people come on, and it's good for them to hear that and know it.
Excellent. We'll, we'll add that on, and we'll definitely have dialogue with that.
Even if it, yeah, even if there's no numbers, just a
Yeah, a gentle reminder, too. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing to have conversation, and I'm looking forward to seeing their list, too. I think from a city perspective, we might not know of everything that they're contributing, you know, to the emergency response center as well. So, it's a good activity, and we're slowly making progress in the background.
Thank you very much.
It's also in the minutes of Moose Lake Fire District date of July 9th, they, under old business, they talk about in-kind letter. Kirk estimated that mowing may run approximately 3,000 a year, snow plowing 6,000 a year, and sanitation in 27 months on page 113. That's in their own minutes. Just one for thought as we're talking.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Thank you. Moving on to 6E, we got 602, 604, 606, full spoken, discussion.
So, the city has received a few complaints regarding the property listed. The concerns were for the structural integrity of the property. The city's building official has done a couple of site inspections. I did include those in the packet, so it looks like 2021 and 2023, the site inspections were done. Then again, in 2024, an additional inspection was done. I don't have that form yet, but what the city building official has provided is a letter from this month, and, you know, with consensus, the city will be sending out that letter. I just wanted counsel to have visibility. At this point in time, it seems that the structural integrity of the building hasn't caused extensive damage that would lead to it currently being unsafe for occupancy. However, the state of the repairs that are needed are definitely, could contribute to that. And so, that's what the building official was trying to communicate. If the proper repairs aren't made, there could be issues coming about here in the near future that do affect occupancy and based on building code, so.
The gentleman did have a, a building permit to complete the front of the building. I think he may have completed the east side of it and never completed the front of the building. It's like half done, as you can see by the picture, and there is no current application in to finish that work. Which makes it look so terrible.
Yes, looking for direction from council. If we want the city building official to continue to pursue it, we would initially send out the letter, and then he would make contact with the business owner.
More questions?
Consensus?
Yes, I would love to have this letter sent back.
Yes, it says 1221 and nothing's, or 102821, and some of this stuff has not been done since that, so I would very much beg that.
You have no consensus? So, we have consensus to move ahead?
Excellent. The other two buildings that Mike was talking about are those also ones we should maybe have the building inspector take a look at? He named two other.
Yeah. Well, one is, is of course, probably talking about the back of the, let's see.
What?
Black building.
I haven't seen.
That would be a little tougher one to
Is it just falling apart, or what?
No.
I've never seen it.
It would be up to him if we request you to look at it. The other one is, is the, I have to use the old name, Old Winchester Home. I don't know that.
No, it isn't that one. It's one of the other ones that he bought.
He bought it toward down, but he was talking about the Old Winchester Home. The gentleman, though, has been cleaning it up.
Which, what is that icon? I don't know.
It would be the third house going east of, let's see, that is Hickory Grove. The church is on the corner of Grove and Fifth. It would be the third house down on Fifth. That, it's been, the gentleman has been working on it for quite some time. That is changing. Dead trees have been, have been removed. A lot of stuff around the home has been removed. I know his long-term is to paint it when he gets to that point of fixing up some windows in, in the porch area. Yes?
So, we do need to be mindful that the city building official is tasked with enforcing building code. And so, we need to make sure that, that any activity from a city perspective and the city's authority lies in, in that, in, in that only. There are other aspects of city ordinance as far as, you know, nuisance and things like that, but we are limited in our, the scope of our involvement.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what he was referring to when he talked about those other properties, if there was stuff falling down, decks hanging off, or whatever.
Mayor.
We can certainly have notify a building inspector and let him make, you know, the decisions within his scope of work that he can do and that he knows that he can and can't do. Yes, sir.
I would also say that when you and I both sat on the Carlin County EDA, we did a lot with downtown revitalization projects, and there was monies available, and maybe Taylor could look into some grants for that. Just excellent. If, if we have those monies, there might be a small match for the homeowners, and there might be some lower income needs there.
Yeah.
It's just another thing that we could offer to the EDA.
Excellent.
Any further discussion, questions? We don't need any action with the home inspector or direction at this point.
If we have consensus, we'll send out the letter.
Just consensus, that's good, okay. Moving on to 6F, 2025 budget discussions.
Yes.
And A is flagged and seasonal, just the core of the area.
Yes, so, looking at, working a few items that have come, that have been requested to city staff for the 2025 budget, and as we continue to look to present a preliminary budget here on the 25th, the request was made to the city to add flags on the poles heading
North.
North, on Arrowhead, all the way to Veterans Park. And so, the, the area on Arrowhead that is not currently receiving the same type of aesthetic effort as other areas.
We just never got to the streetscape portion of it, and the streetscape plan was planned and all that, but I don't see that happening at this time, but we certainly could put flags and Christmas decorations down on the poles. They're not the decorative light poles, they're, they're the, the wood poles, but decorations used to hang on them up until the streetscape going south at the, and it just never went north again.
Superintendent Edner established up there 11 poles that currently don't have anything on them, and then dug into the cost of the brackets and flags. That's $100 per pole. Then in addition, we found some examples of lighting, and so, you would take that amount and multiply it out times the 11 poles, and that's what we'd be looking at putting in the budget to extend that.
I think it's a minimum expenditure to beautify that into town or help the looks of that in our center town. Are you looking for consensus to move ahead with this?
Looking for direction from council. Are we adding it in? Are we finding a spot for it? What is, what is the desire there to facilitate, and then we will
I recommend that.
As requested.
I agree.
Is that after January 1nd? Is that your recommendation?
Well, it'd be the 2025 budget. It'd be nice if it's the Christmas decorations.
It would be nice if it was, I don't know if we're going to pull it from there. Where's the money coming from?
Consensus. Time for 2025. It would, that's what the request is for that budget. So, I won't be, well, yes, Chris.
Would the electric company help with the pass of the stars?
We may ask.
I think.
Huh?
They'd love to.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We can absolutely ask.
I'm sure there's, for sure, the labor putting them up would be free.
Well, yeah, I know they'd be bad.
I'm just throwing that up.
Maybe they would feel that they want to beautify that into town.
Well, we could definitely make that request, definitely, but we need to come up here shortly to bring that up, ask them, well, but, agenda.
I think you have consensus to put it into the budget, and it may be helped by our, our, our
Sure. Take a look.
Moving to FB, Annual Park Maintenance Budget Allocation. I requested this to be put on because it's been quite a while since we put substantial amount of money into our parks. And, and granted, Phil, you're doing a great job. I'm not saying that you're not on this, and every year we do a list from the park board of a review of all the parks, a walk through. And they're usually small, and not, none of them are big, and they're fit within a budget, but some of these parks, it's been quite a while. Have to start looking at the playground equipment at the big park. It's that old wood play, I don't know, it's got a dozen things on it you can do, and we've been told about it probably quite a few years ago, we should replace it. Those things are not cheap. They're, they can go up to 30, 40,000, but you have to start looking at budgeting for that. The one up on the hill, the playground equipment is fairly new. The chamber did a lot of events over about a year and a half and generated about 28,000, if you remember, Chris, back about 10 years ago. And they, that was donated to that park. That stuff is in good shape. The sand, however, it needs about two dump truck loads of wash sand. And before you do that, that one south-east corner should be dug up and a poured wall put in there so it doesn't wash it. All that sand is in, in
I always said
The pipes going down. Yeah. Wastewater. Yes?
Was that, if I'm not mistaken, that playground equipment down at the main park, that, wasn't there an organization that funded to put that in?
That was replaced by
Some, or I can't remember who it was.
I thought it was the gentleman that lost his child.
Old Chan was.
Yeah. It was a donation.
Yes, okay.
The old stuff was digged out.
Yeah, okay, you're correct.
I couldn't remember the name, you know. I know some of that other toys down there have disappeared, those things you dig with.
Yep.
I don't know if they're stolen or
Yep, some of them have gotten stolen, some, one was destroyed.
Yeah. So, some of that needs to be replaced. And money is hard to come by with parks, but you, they're, they're gems in a community. One of the big pushes when we did that, sales tax, was parks. And I know that's a hard thing to take out of because you want to use it for the big projects, but when you do save up over a million dollars, you do need to be spent. Take enough money out of that to fix those parks up, keep them up. Not only that, but the first child heard, a person heard, it would be good if it's something we could have fixed or replaced.
We have been looking into some grant opportunities that we're interested in applying for. Taylor and I have engaged in one, and so, outside of a budget allocation to prioritizing, you know, understanding that there's equipment that needs to be replaced, and then even from a community perspective, you know, is there a partner that if we can get a grant can help with matching funds and things like that? So, we're, we're working on that in the background, but that's not an annual maintenance commitment that, if, you know, if we're going to have parks, we have to maintain them. It's really important that we, that we do so, too, so.
Just want to put that out, in this budget cycle coming up, there should be money split in, into this budget for some of this stuff. I just wanted to throw that out, and I'm going to bring it up every month until December.
We could ask for a lining item at least to be created for that, for, and then maybe we could designate where we can tell some of these sites at that point, and then it would be ready for next year's budget, at least to start putting up funding in there.
Excellent. Okay. We can, we can look at what's available or where we can move and modify and then present that on the 25th.
In that way, in that way, yes, go ahead.
Just any equipment we look at, I think, obviously, things have changed, but should be low maintenance, those types of things. Might have to spend a little more for it, but something that we don't have to. Barnum Elementary School has some beautiful equipment. I don't know where they got it, but it looks pretty low maintenance.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on, 7 reports of correspondence, 78 Teamsters Joint to Council for the Two Employee Health and Wellness Funds Payroll Audit. Any discussion?
Uh, no. This is an annual process for the city. I, I don't know that we're engaging in this moving forward. We, you know, even at the time of this audit, we're no longer engaged with this particular union, but we did comply with the request, and it's been completed, and it went well. And I just wanted counsel to have this going with that.
17, Minnesota Vegetation, 2025 Supervocation Minimum Local Support Demand.
Yes, excuse me, so from Public Library Services, the minimum support is coming in at $66,000 for, our annual budget does exceed that, not by much, but it does, and so, we're monitoring that, making sure that we're aware of that amount, even with quarterly, well, sometimes monthly and our quarterly review, making sure that our, our spending exceeds that allotment. We have run into that in the past, and we're making sure that that does not happen again.
Thank you. Any questions? 17, Carroll County Drug Prevention Coalition Meeting Notes, August 12, 2024.
Simply for council to review and for visibility to some of the county activities and efforts.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to committee and board meeting minutes. A, A Moose Lake Area Fire Protection District Meeting Minutes for July 9th, 2024. A, B Moose Lake Area Fire Protection District Eight B, Moose Lake Area Fire Protection District meeting minutes, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And C, Parks and Recreation Board meeting minutes, August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions? I have one, and that is on Parks and Recreation. About a month ago, we were notified of a possibility of either a skateboard, pad, or a multi-purpose used pad. And one was built out in the township or will be.
Yes.
Yeah, do we have, what became of that? Because we got that same info.
So the matching requirement for that particular project would be about
Seven, eighty thousand dollars.
Correct, so we would definitely need a community partner on it. It is going on a list, so what the park board is working on right now is kind of establishing priorities for, you know, capital improvements for this year's budget and are moving forward. So Taylor will be sending out an email with a list of things that have been brought forward, a collective list, to then have them prioritize as park board members what they'd like to see. And then that information will then come back to council. And that will be used as a resource for budgeting as well, and will kind of funnel things through the system so that it can absolutely be included on there. There will be prioritization, but also mindfulness of what's available for spending, and whether or not it's, you know, maybe takes a couple of years of savings and/or it's a small enough project that is revenue generating. I mean, there's been different discussions had at the park board level on how to prioritize some of the capital needs and engagements. The skate park, the dog park was brought forward. There's a couple of campground improvements that are being reviewed. A beach house renovation that's being reviewed, that pad, a whole host of things. And we'll bring that information to the council as soon as it's run through the park board system.
There was no deadline, drop dead deadline then?
There is a deadline. I didn't, I guess I didn't receive a whole lot of feedback, I guess, to keep pushing forward. So she wanted to know what your guys' input was.
From what I recall, Mr. Mayor, there was a lot of money that we have to come up with upfront. We do not have in our budget anywhere for that. And Moose Lake Township already has that out there. It's a three-mile drive if somebody wants to go use that.
I think the only reason if there's a drop deadline, it wouldn't hurt to see if some of the larger health organizations, I'll put it that way, are interested in something like that in the community because they do sponsor them in other cities. It wouldn't hurt just to see if they would. If they say no, okay, fine.
The same would hold true with our equipment for the playground, because that's, that starts at the core, we can name it essentially like park or whatever. Whatever, St. Luke's or St. San Diego's.
If possible, could you get the deadline date?
Sure.
Thank you. One other thing I was thinking of before I go into announcements. That, the efforts we put in towards the workout center is a dead issue now, correct? For all city employees, part of that health wellness program, that's a dead now, correct?
I'm not sure, I can bring it forward. They aren't, they are not willing to budge. It's ten thousand dollars for the year for all team members to utilize it.
That was regardless, if one participated or if one or five participated.
We should, we should do an action on it either to forget it so they know that we're not thinking about it or not. Which would kind of clear the record with them for anything else that we come up with. Is it council, I'll do consensus, consensus to move ahead or to drop that altogether and notify them that we're not getting to do it for ten thousand for all employees.
Personally, I think that if it was per employees, so you could bring that number down, it would be worth it. But if you have just one or two people participating in it, ten thousand dollars is not
Terrible.
Is terrible, so I would say at this point we don't proceed.
And I did, I did ask them for a discount per
Per yourself.
Per employee, yeah, and myself.
And they never answered.
No, he said that this is a firecracker deal, and this is what we're willing to offer, and we're not going to budge for it.
Right.
Drop it.
Drop it. Notify them we're not interested.
You know, another avenue we could look at again is the school with the new superintendent. Workout facility.
They allow law enforcement to go up there and work out, so I don't see why they'd
I think it's already open to community members if they go up and sign up and they'll get a card from their office, I mean, that already exists, I guess.
Maybe Ryan could get us a firecracker deal on that one.
Firecracker deal.
Okay. Moving on tonight, announcement, regular Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty-four, four P M, Moose Lake City Council Room. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, September eighth, twenty twenty-four, twelve P M, at the City Conference Room. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, one P M, Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing Redevelopment Authority Board, Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, eleven A M, Hillside Manor Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District, Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M, Emergency Response Center. Moose Lake Park Board, Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four, five P M, right here. Any other input from the council, administrator? Here are none, do you have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Posty carry.